The one is very exciting, a big, big amount. And today, but before we get to that, we're gonna handle item number one. It's the CDBG dollars for nonprofit services. These are grant recommendations. We talked about this at our last meeting and we asked the planning and development staff to go back and make an adjustment related to the funding here. And so I don't know if you all have it in front of you, but we are leaving all of the amounts as they were at our meeting. However, we are increasing the amount that goes to mortar by 25,000. So that will take them up to 100,000 for their allocation. Those dollars were found in a contingency fund from some of the programs that came in under budget from our last round. And so, thank you, thank you to the staff, both Joy and Emily, for working this through with us. I think we all recognize the benefit of mortar and the work that they do. So that is the change that's in front of us. We will not be passing this today. We'll have a resolution on Thursday that outlines all of this and then we will pass that resolution. But I wanted to make sure that we had one more conversation about this before we brought the resolution forward. So Joy or Emily, is there anything to add?
No, we were able to find funding, as you said, from projects that were completed under budget. So not the nonprofit services, but other projects that were construction projects. So we're happy to do that.
Great. Emily, we good?
Yep. That's really the only thing.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just really happy that you guys were able to find some other money and do some great things like you often do. And so I certainly appreciate it. That's great news that people will be, agencies will be getting additional monies. And so I had a very close constituent was saying, I say my sister was saying to me as she watches this show, she calls it the Stephanie Show, even though we're all here. But she made a point that I thought was a great point. And that was as we were looking at where we could take money from, put money into, I'm thinking, what if mortar, or what if the free store was listening? And I was saying, well, take 25,000 from there. And so that was something that really did not need to be said publicly, but just more of a general statement. And so I thank her for that input and I want to apologize for anybody that was in that mix to get money that I was, you know, actually on air talking about, well, maybe we could take this and take, and that wasn't very good. And so I apologize for that. And I just want to thank you guys for all the work that you're doing. And it also makes it harder for you when you're working on this thing and then I start, you know, just off the cuff, mentioning taking a certain amount of money. So thank you guys for really thinking this whole thing through. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just really happy for mortar. The work that they do is important and significant. They really help our community and I'm proud that we can infuse more money into their work. So that's it.
Great, thank you. All right, so with that, let us look for that resolution on Thursday. And I feel like we'll have broad support for that. So thank you to Joy and Emily again for working through that issue with us. All right, let's move on to agenda item number two. Commissioner Parks, I'm gonna let you introduce this. And we do have a special guest on the call who happens to be a very good friend of mine from Franklin County. So I'm delighted that Kevin or Commissioner Boyce is joining. But Commissioner Parks, I'm gonna kick this over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Today is such an exciting day. We had a press conference this morning where we just had a team of public health crises in Hamilton County. I want to thank Commissioner Kevin Boyce from Franklin County. His, your guidance and your help and cooperation has just been invaluable and I really appreciate it. Like I said this morning, that when I read your resolution and also the report that you guys put together after working for a year, I knew that we did not have that kind of time, but I was so inspired that I knew that Hamilton County could do something and with the help of the fabulous team under the Board of County Commissioners along with our community partners. I'm gonna give huge kudos to Jeff Ludo, to interim Health Commissioner Greg Kesterman, and just the other community partners, people like the Center for Closing the Health Gap, the YWCA, the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, and the list goes on and on. So with that, I'm going to ask Commissioner Boyce if, is there anything that you'd like to say?
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Parks, and certainly President Dreehouse and Commissioner, I think I probably should pronounce it right, Dimas?
Kamala Dimas, uh-huh.
Dimas, yeah. To all of you, thank you so much for giving me a brief moment of your time today. And I commend you, the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, for taking what I think is a profound statement, but more importantly, action for the residents of Hamilton County. Let me, I feel, I'd be remiss if I didn't give you a little bit of background about Franklin County. And then I'd just like to talk about the last few weeks that I've got to spend with Commissioner Parks, working on this resolution. So in 2018, Franklin County, we began to ask ourselves, why is it that central Ohio is growing and bustling at the seams in terms of that growth in nearly every part of the county? Yet there were parts of our county where poverty just continued to grow at exponential and double-digit rates. And in, at the time, Franklin County had an unemployment rate of about 4%, you know? And so by all economic standards, that's considered fully employed, although we know there's no such thing. Economic standards, we were really busting at the seams, yet in some communities, the poverty rates were 25, 30, and even 40%. And it's the old tale of a tale of two counties, tale of two cities, where one part of the county is growing and flourishing and thriving, and another part of the county is struggling and can't get out from that bottom rung and so forth and so on. So we committed to really drilling down and looking at what was happening in Franklin County. And we spent the better part of the year hiring consultants and asking them to help us peel back the layers to find out what was going on in Franklin County. And what we found in nearly every category of quality of life, from education to access to healthcare, affordable housing, and certainly health and wellness, embedded in all of those disparate numbers was the issue of race. And that led us to begin to really think about our work in a very different way. And so the declaration of racism as a public health crisis was really one component of what we have been studying over the course of a year. So fast forward to the outreach from Commissioner Parks. And I told her, by the way, I've probably got no less than 50 or 60 calls from counties and cities from across the country after our declaration, it's probably up to something like 200 now. But I always shared this backdrop of this story. Everyone wanted a copy of the resolution and whatnot. And I always shared, well, let me give you the backdrop, because a resolution is one element of the real work that goes on. And I have to tell you, Commissioner Parks probably responded in the most unique, most deliberate, and most focused way that I have seen out of all of the folks I interacted with across this country on this. And her response was this, "Our time is limited, but we understand the value and importance of every resident in Hamilton County. And more importantly, we understand the moment of now and what we have an opportunity to do." So she said, "I don't want to spend a lot of time doing a bunch of meetings and doing a lot of work to tell us what we already know. Let's do the work, but let's get at it. Let's develop our resolution for Hamilton County and focus on our issues and challenges and our progresses." She was very, I think, quick to point out that there had already been a number of progresses in Hamilton County that we didn't want to overlook as we really peel back the layers to address some of these other issues. And in doing that, we set a date to meet, you know, once a week, every week. And I just, I've never seen someone so more focused on the details, more focused on the broader picture of impact and wanting to capture these actions, these moments, and then identify the action items. I'd be remiss if I didn't say Son, Sonia, and Jeff were very much an active part. You have a very good organization in Hamilton County. And again, I get the opportunity to work in my private life with a lot of government entities, as well as in my public official life. And I gotta tell you, Hamilton, this isn't the same Hamilton County that I worked with even 10 years ago. I'm telling you, you all are doing something different. A culture has changed and shifted at Hamilton County, and it is going to be reflected in this resolution. So finally, let me just say, I think this resolution is one of the best resolutions that I've seen. Everyone has brought their estimate. I've had a chance to look at literally hundreds of them almost, probably at this point. And this is one of the better ones because it's comprehensive. You know, it takes into account things like oral health and, you know, it takes into account, you know, the investment in your diversity and inclusion operations and all of the things you're doing already, but all the things that you need to do. And I think that's the real semblance of measurement of a resolution like this. And so I just want to conclude with my comments by saying, on behalf of my own colleague, John O'Grady and Marilyn Brown, we're so proud to stand with Hamilton County as you take this really important step in letting Hamilton County know, that's the residents of Hamilton County and all of those things within, that this is important, this is of value, and most importantly, you're committed to it. And so for that, you are to be congratulated and certainly in Franklin County, we offer our support in any way that we can. And again, kudos and congratulations, Commissioner Parks. I mean, you were absolutely amazing. And I'm not just saying that because we're on this call in front of your colleagues. I'm telling you, working with others around this country, I've not seen anyone do this as well as you carried this out. And I think your resolution is perfect. And quite frankly, it is better than Franklin County's, and it is more thorough than Franklin County's. And if we're gonna be borrowing some of the things that you all identified that we didn't get to, we're gonna take some of those things out of that because, again, you guys were just so thoughtful and directive about it. So congratulations and I certainly take any questions that you might have.
Commissioner, thank you so much. You didn't have to say it was better than yours, because yours, right?
Better, it's better.
It was such a joy to work with you and what I like is the collaboration. And we have committed to work together and I'll be stealing your ideas and you can, well, you know, it's not theft, we would just exchange.
We'd just share, that's right.
Yes, share. So I just appreciate it, you know, you taking the time, you taking the time to read it and to share with us the steps that you took, the challenges that you faced, and to recommend to us that we did not have to not look at the programs that we already had. I remember that conversation, you know, when we were trying to cut the issues to come up with what we wanted to take a look at. So I just can't say enough. I really appreciate it. This has been quite the experience. And I am, I'm proud of working with you and I'm proud of the work with my colleagues, my other commissioners. Jeff Aludo has just been incredible. Bridget Dowdard, Sonia, you know, we got at it. And I will say that I am proud of the final document. Oh, Greg Kesterman, who was just incredible. I cannot forget him. You know, he, he got at it. When I talked to him, told him what I wanted to do, he just laid this out. This thing came together like it was just meant to be. And so with that, I will also, again, bring up my predecessor, Commissioner Todd Portune, because the programs that we have in place are a result of his wisdom, his vision, his passion for equity and fairness. And I miss him terribly, but I do feel him with us today. And I think that he would be proud, but if he was still here, we would still be in the press conference.
That's true.
So, so thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thanks. Yeah, so I just want to say that it's striking that this is such a moment in Hamilton County. It's a bit of a flashpoint for us. And Commissioner Boyce, as you say, there's been a cultural shift here at the county, and I think it's been happening for a couple of years, but this is a nice touch point as we continue to make progress in this county for everybody that lives in the county. But you started this statewide, and I know there are other organizations, whether they're county commissioners or city councils or whatever it is, who have adopted similar resolutions because of the work that you did, because you set the example for the rest of us and started to say, we need to create a space where we can have this conversation and start to change the culture in the state. So it's been a wonderful partnership. And so while we're very proud at the county of what was brought forward today, and we'll have further conversations on Thursday, it's really your work in Franklin County that is reflective of now what's happening throughout the state. So kudos to you, we're happy to copy your work, or at least in part, and then add our own Hamilton County flavor to it, which is, you know, just how we do. So, and to Commissioner Parks, and I know it was said earlier, but thank you for your work on this. It's just, you're the right person at the right time to do this work, and I think it's gonna be really meaningful. So I guess we'll get into some of the detail because it is, talks about the systemic racism and how we tackle it, whether it's health disparities, or as you said, oral health, infant mortality, economic development. We're doing a lot of work in that space. We're gonna do a disparity study, which is critically important to level set what we're doing here in Hamilton County. So more to come, but yeah, it's just a really, it's a great day to celebrate in Hamilton County. So thank you both.
Madam President, just one more comment. I don't want to take credit totally, my colleagues, Marilyn Brown and John O'Grady deserve equal credit for this work that we're doing. And then the second thing I would say is that I remember a few years ago when there was a lot of unrest in Cincinnati and Hamilton County on racial issues. And it's just great to see the progress. I know we've got a long ways to go, but it's great to see this kind of progress because even when you go back to that unrest several years back, you know, who would have thought that we'd be at this point, you know, in this growth? And I think it was, someone wrote an editorial on it recently about what your community learned from that time. I recall who wrote the editorial, but what your community learned. And we all learn from each other in this, in this process and this work. And so we'll continue to reach out and be partners for whatever you need, and we'll continue to learn from Hamilton County in every way we can. I can assure you that.
Thank you, Ken. Commissioner Summer O'Donoghue?
Yes, I have a few comments. Thank you, Commissioner Boyce. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, are you the first African American on the commission in Franklin County?
Yes, that's true, in 2008, yep, thank you.
That's what I was thinking, because when I won, I remember reading about you also. So you were the first there and I was the first here. So congratulations, I haven't seen you in person.
You too, I know, congratulations to you too.
Yeah, and I also want to just thank you for your efforts in helping this come about, this resolution to come about. Of course, you know, racism is a, is a health crisis, has been, is, and will be unless we as a total society agree that this is all of our problems and not just the black community or the red community. So I just wanted to thank you for your efforts. And as we move forward and as Commissioner Parks mentioned, Commissioner Portune led the charge in 2018 as we had our first resolution proclamation to look at systemic racism. And he led that and we passed that and we continue to do that. So I thank you so much for what you did and what Commissioner Parks has done because it's definitely needed all over the world. So it's a small part of it, so thank you. And you know, you talked about a cultural change since 2018, you've seen that, I've also seen it also. I think we bring a flavor to the commission, maybe that was not there, you know, for 223 years, they had not had an African American in Hamilton County, I don't know how long in Franklin County, but there's a different view, a different flavor, a different context, a different experience that is so much needed. And I really believe that that was not by accident, that it took that long for it to happen, but it happened. And now we have two African American women, so thank you so much.
Yeah, very well said.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Parks, anything to add?
Well, do you want to get into some detail?
I think so, yes.
Okay, I will bring up some parts that, my favorite parts. Like I love the thing, I love the resolution in its entirety, but I think that there are some parts of it that reveal the heart and soul of it. So I'd like to start with the very first paragraph that says, "Whereas public health is the science of protecting and improving the health of people, entire populations and their communities. Public health professionals try to prevent problems from happening or recurring through implementing educational programs, recommending policies, administering services, and limiting health disparities through the promotion of equitable and accessible healthcare. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans."
Yeah, well, so Commissioner Parks, you didn't highlight one of my most favorite parts, which is the economic development part.
Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health divide resulting in Black Ohioans. Whereas racism and segregation in Ohio and Hamilton County have exacerbated a health with George Floyd. And it is, is training that is geared towards ensuring that people in all aspects of, of an organization have the tools and the knowledge and the training and are instilled with the confidence and the courage to make sure that if something is going wrong, that they have the ability to say that something's going wrong and to speak up. And that sounds so easy and it sounds just matter of fact and matter of course. But we all know that in any organizational environment, especially if you're someone new coming into that, that organization, sometimes it's very difficult to speak up. Now put yourself into a law enforcement environment where there's a clear hierarchy of command, it becomes even more difficult. So some of the things that, that happened with, with the George Floyd incident, you compare that to some other things that happened in subsequent events throughout the country, over the fall, over the subsequent days and weeks, show how just the actions of one individual saying something at the right time can save not only lives, but also livelihoods of people around that person, as well as careers and livelihoods moving forward. So, so we were really happy to have the chance to weigh in on this, even happier that the Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff himself, Chief Deputy, his Chief Training Officer, really took this at our, at our suggestion, looked at it. And at the end of the day, it was, it was their call as to whether this is something that speaks to us and something that we're willing to do and that they very quickly looked at it and said that they thought that it, that it would. So we'll be following up with them on that and obviously providing them any assistance they need to get that, to get that done and be there to partner with them as they do. And as Commissioner Parks also said, I've talked to Frank Spataro from the perspective, who's our HR Director, from the perspective of recognizing that, look, a version of this same type of training is just as applicable in other aspects of the organization as it is the Sheriff's Office. This is the same type of training that is very common in the airline industry as it relates to pilots, to surgeons and the medical, medical institutions, to make sure that other people in ER, emergency rooms have the ability, in surgical rooms have the ability to speak up if a, if a mistake is being made. And there's no reason not to apply that same logic when we're talking about decisions being made in any of our other organizations, whether it's the Planning Department, the Budget Office, the 911 Center, et cetera. So I've asked Frank to take a look at how we can take our existing training packages and pull out of that the element of active bystander and ensure that it becomes a part of the culture of Hamilton County, that people that are in positions to see something happening that may not be right, that they're empowered with the courage to say so. So thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to weigh in on this.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, Commissioner, if it was a countywide initiative?
Yes, 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 it is. So Frank is taking a look at incorporating this into the HR policy. So, any questions about that?
I was wondering about the training, Commissioner Parks, and is it a virtual training or is the Sheriff Department actually going to have to take some men down there?
The, what is next month, three people will go to New Orleans.
They're actually going there?
Yes, and, and receive the training. They will receive the train, the trainer. Training and, and come back and educate the Sheriff's Department.
Sure, okay.
Okay, so with that, let's, let's also talk about what has been going on that I am simply delighted about. On Sunday, my, my grandson flew in from Atlanta. So I was at the airport. This is a short story. But I think that this is what's happening in our society. You know, when, when he got off the plane, of course, I was the happy grandmother and I, I thought I could pick him up and spin him around, but he's as tall as I am now. And, and so we laughed and talked and hugged and got his stuff and we were on our way to the shuttle. And, and I noticed a man paying us extra attention. You know, I, I could feel him looking at us. And, you know, I thought it was unusual. And so we went to the shuttle and we were standing there and the, the man who was a white man with the mask on, he engaged us, asked us where we were from, you know, and I told him, this is my grandson and I'm happy he's home. So we got on the shuttle and I thought dude was going to go on the other side and we would be on our side, but he kept on. And he said to me, he said, there is so much going on. I said, yes, yes, there is. You know, leave me alone. Let me talk to my grandson. But he said, you know, I mean, he wanted to talk. He said, if we could just all be kind to each other. I said, that's true. That's true. Yes, yes. If you were kindly treating each other guy. And then the guy looks at me and he said that when he thinks about how his grandparents talked and how his mother and father talked and, and the things that they taught him, he started, this grown man started crying. He, he was, he was sobbing and he apologized to me. And he said that he hopes that I never have to suffer loss with my grandson because somebody that was raised like he was did not change themselves. I, I, I was floored. I was totally floored. And I, I've been black for over 60 years and I will tell you that has never happened to me before. But I, I do believe that that is the, you know, that, that, that is how people are feeling. And it's, it's different, but, but it's a good thing. And so with that, I've also been contacted with my white brothers and sisters wondering what they can do. How can they learn? What should they read? So with that, we have been in partner, we formed a partnership with the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, who is in the midst of putting together curriculum for just that, to, to teach history, you know, and, and history really can't be debated. History is just what it is. And it's there for you to learn from, to do better than what you did, to correct the iniquities and the mistakes that you made in the past. But if you don't face it, you cannot change it. And, and so we, we will, we will soon find out what they have, but I'm, I'm excited because he said that they will have different levels and different kinds of training and different, you know, as, as far as how in-depth it gets. And it'd be more than, in addition to implicit bias, you know, teach the history and the psychology of what historical chattel slavery has done to children of African descent. So, so I'm, I'm excited about that.
That's great. Thank you. Yeah, I think the training is especially important and I, really interesting. You know, I think obviously that needs to be done. I'm delighted it's going to be done countywide because we all need to can do that for ourselves and for others, participate in some implicit bias training. Thank you, Commissioner Parks. Do you have anything else to add related to, I know, I know the resolution has a lot in it. It's very comprehensive. You have obviously hit the highlights. Thank you for doing that. Is there anything else? Or Commissioner Semardumis, do you have any questions related to the resolution?
I have no questions. I know you mentioned a bit ago about the diversity study. And so how do we go about looking at that and whether or not we want to do that?
So that it was a recommendation previously from the Inclusion Council. Jeff reminds me, did we have that budgeted in our previous budget?
I don't think that it was in the previous budget. So we'll, we'll have to, but I'll go back and confirm that because I just can't remember when the recommendation from the Inclusion Council came and, and how that integrated with the budget process. But you're correct, it was a recommendation. I know there had been, there have been some varying opinions on budget associated with it. So I think we were doing some more detailed research on, on that as well. But I'll, I'll go back and, and look at that at the same time, get some updated estimates from, from Robert Bell on that as well.
Right. So we'll, we'll have to go out for bid, obviously, for an organization to conduct the disparity study, but they've been conducted all over the country and I'm, I'm certain we'll get plenty of bids for that opportunity. So we'll have to bring that forward. But we're, you know, and I, I'm sure Commissioner Parks, you will mention that this is a draft. You've said it many times, that we want community input related to the resolution. It is now up on the website as of this morning. And so we have a public hearing on Thursday at 1:00. It'll be our regular commission meeting, but we're going to set aside time for public comment related to the resolution, comments, additions, anything that, that anyone would like to offer. And then we've got a week in between where some more work can be done to incorporate what we learn and what we hear. And then we will not pass the resolution until that Thursday of that, that week in July, when, when we come back in. So we've got a little bit of time to figure out some of the details. Victoria, did I encapsulize that correctly?
Um, yes. What, what we're thinking is the week of the 13th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me ask a question. I was wondering why we were having a public hearing versus just allowing for public comments. We don't normally do that with the resolution, other than, you know, economic issues. So I was just wondering, why are we having a hearing versus just having public comments?
Go ahead.
It, it is to, to listen to what the public has to say. You know, this, this, this will affect finances and, and, and it affects everybody. I, you know, I think that we, we could have public comment, but with, with the hearing, I think traditionally, and am I right, President Drehouse, is that it, it encourages a broader number of people to come. And, and, and what's going to be exciting is, this is also going to be the first time that we do this virtually.
Exciting and complicated.
So, so, you know, it's Commissioner Semardumis, it is to relay our feeling of community involvement, that I want to hear what they have to say. And, and Jackie, is, is there a difference in the way that we record in a, in a public meeting or in a hearing? I mean, a public, public comment?
There's really no difference. You could list the resolution and have public comment about it, or you could list it like it is and have it as, as a subject of a public hearing. And that's, and that's the way it's listed at this time.
I, I just think it sets a precedent on resolutions that we're establishing to now have public hearings on it. So, you know, that's all I had to say. I, I don't want us to start a precedent. How do we decide what resolution gets a public hearing versus just having comments? So, okay, that's all I had.
Well, let me, let me just add in that at our meetings, our Thursday meetings, we do do public hearings. A lot of times they're related to engineer projects. We do public hearings on TLRC recommendations. We do public hearings on MSD. We, so, so it is not without precedent to have a public hearing outside of the budget process. I think the feeling was that this is a significant resolution where it's been difficult to get public comment because of the nature of how we do our meetings, which is virtual. And so I think to allow for the community to participate in a more robust way, we felt it might be easier to do a public hearing because this virtual world has been limiting. And so I think that, Victoria, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was part of the thought process as well, that since we can't have people in person, a public hearing would announce to the public, we welcome your comment and want you to be part of this dialogue with us, as opposed to just a comment period.
Exactly, Madam President.
Yeah. Well, as you know, I'm aware of all the public hearings we've had. So that's nothing new to me. And of course, you know, that public comments are extremely important to me. So it's not about whether or not we should do it. I just wanted to throw it out and ask why we were doing it differently as it relates to this resolution. So that's, that's all, only comment I wanted to make.
All right, thank you. All right. So again, public, public hearing at 1:00 on Thursday. There's some buffer time in the middle there. Commissioner Parks, did you say you anticipate passing the resolution the week of July 13th?
Yes. You know, I, I don't know. I, you know, sometimes we do it on Tuesdays.
Tuesday?
Yeah, just that week.
Okay. All right. Very good. So that gives some time to work through, you know, the issues and, and, yeah, okay. All right. Very good. Commissioner Boyce, she's still on?
I am.
No, there he is. All right. Very good. What, so I just wanted to thank you again. On behalf of all three of us, thank you so much for your leadership on this. Any parting thoughts?
No, just again, congratulations. A very interesting conversation. And again, you guys are, I actually made a couple of notes of some things that you talked about here that again, I can talk about at Franklin County. Maybe I'll part with this one announcement. We passed a resolution today adopting Juneteenth as a paid holiday for county employees. And we took off Columbus. We, you know, we replaced Columbus Day with Juneteenth. And, and it's, it's actions like that that really reconcile history a little bit. And I, I think, you know, that, that's what all of this leads to, is a reconciliation of history and the way our stories are told, good, bad, and indifferent. And so I was excited that we would have passed that resolution. And we have any impact from the unions, because you know, those are usually determined in the CBA, but we, we're going to work that out. And so it's official that Juneteenth is official paid holiday.
That's great.
Right. Thank you. You guys are just kind of, all right. Thanks, thanks so much for joining.
Bye-bye.
All right, bye-bye.
All right. So we will look forward to Thursday's agenda then. Commissioner Parks, anything else to add before we conclude here?
No, just, just to express all of my thanks to, to the team who helped me do this.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Um, so what, one other thing, Jeff, while we're still in public session, we, I have been receiving communications related to the banks and some of the agreements that are down there. I don't know if the other commissioners have as well, but just wanted to get an update there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Happy to provide an update or Phil Beck is not on today. So I'm not really able to provide too much of a construction update, other than the fact that we, the progress on 3B and the music venue continue. Is there a specific aspect of the update you were looking for?
Just as it relates to the, the park project moving forward and some of the actions of the city and how they dovetail into what the county's doing and, you know.
Got it. Okay. Yeah. So I am aware that the city had appropriated funding for the parks project. You remember back in, I think it was in mid-April of, of this year, the county approved bid package six on the banks, which included a trade contract for some of the underlying public infrastructure on Lot 23, but also included trade contract nine, which, which relates to the park. The county passed that resolution. The, the city had held off on executing that agreement at that time. They did appropriate money for it, I believe at one of their last council meetings, but I think they were holding that until passage of the cooperative agreement, the bank's cooperative agreement, which is something that we have been working on with the city, really over the course of the first part of this year. This gets back into, if you remember back in November, when Commissioner Portune and Mayor Cranley met to discuss a new cooperative agreement related to the banks. And I, I probably shouldn't go too much further before just kind of describing for the public and maybe watching what the banks want.
Madam President, may I?
Yes.
Well, Jeff, I know that we were in communication with the city and I'm just wondering, do you have an update as far as how that is going?
Sure. Yeah. So I'll get, absolutely get into that. So the, the, the bank's cooperative agreement is really the mutual agreement that exists between the county and the city that expresses how we jointly want to move forward with that project, how we're going to plan it, how we're going to work it, so that the project is seamless, so that it's on time, that it's on budget, that it's sustainable, and that it mutually works to the benefit of both the city and the county. So to that question, Commissioner Parks, we'd been working with the city over the first part of this year to, to negotiate a new cooperative agreement that is in, that is consistent with the, the principles and the discussion that Commissioner Portune and Mayor Cranley had back in November. I believe you were, you were in that meeting. The, the main issue that you'll recall is that the county and the city out of that meeting wanted to ensure that the city and the county respectively both had independent development control of certain lots. The city was going to have development control on one and 13, county on 24 and 25. And I think the city and the county are fundamentally committed to that and, and both entities are trying to work towards that goal. I think the issue has been, how do we do this in a way that does not subject the county to additional financial risk or loss? And how do we retain the financial mechanics that have been the assurance that, that the project itself remains sustainable and that the project itself is not subject to financial risk in the future? We don't want to lose those major underpinnings. And that has been some of the dialogues we've gone through is how do we, how do we get to the goal that we all want to get to, where we, where we make sure that, that we have independent control over these certain lots and some of the other things that were in that, in that agreement. But how do we do it without make, without risking the financial sustainability of the project or financial loss from the county's perspective? And so that's what we continue to go back and forth on right now. But I'm happy to say the project continues to move forward. Phase 3B is moving ahead. The music venue is moving ahead. I'm hopeful that we can execute the, the contract on, on the parks as the county did a month or two ago, while we continue to advance discussion on the cooperative agreement because the two really are kind of separate, separate animals. So I'll continue to work with the city on that, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions if maybe I didn't hit on either your question directly or Commissioner Parks, yours.
What is the last update from the city? What, what are they saying? And how does that line up with what Commissioner Portune said?
Yeah. So there are, the, the last update from the city, there are some, there are some elements of the cooperative agreement that I think from the county's perspective, we think still put the county at risk as it relates to the overall funding of the project and the revenue that, and revenue sources from the, from the project or the sustainability, if you will, of the project itself. And so we're looking to reconcile that with the city and will continue to work with, with them on that. So, you know, we have the, the underlying framework of the entire bank's development is the master development agreement, which ensures that, that the, the project will receive the appropriate return on investment to pay for the underlying finance, public infrastructure, that type of thing. We want to keep those things in place at the same, at, at the same time that we meet the, the needs of having each party have independent control over certain lots, et cetera. And that's what we're trying to get to, on the same page with the city on.
Right, Jeff, because the last thing that Commissioner Portune would want is to change is so that the county is at risk of, of, of risking the, the foundation of the agreement.
Certainly. And that's, and I think that direction has been clear from, from this board and from prior boards as well. And so we've attempted to ensure that that is a part of any final agreement that we'll agree to the city with.
Right. Yes, that's, that's important. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes.
Jeff, I just wanted to, I know there are certain things we can't ask because we're still in negotiations and some things are, need to be asked in executive session. But specifically, since you brought it up about the parks project, I do remember reading our notes about April the 16th, there was something signed as it relates to the parks and what it'll look like and the construction of the parks. And specifically, since I didn't vote for the mint music venue, specifically the parks project was an area that I wanted to be included in. And hopefully, even though things have been signed in April, I can continue to be included in that development of that parks project. Cause my main concern was for young people and making sure that that park was conducive for young people. Young people don't like just sitting on a bench. I know there'll be some concerts. But I had mentioned about maybe a skateboard park or a roller skating area. And so I was really surprised when I read that plans had been signed as it relates to what's going on in that park. So having been promised to be a part of that, I still would like to be a, a part of that before those final plans are developed. Because I just want to ensure that young people have a, a place to go.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
All right. Thank you for the update, Jeff. Appreciate it. Okay. Is there anything else before we go into executive session? Hearing nothing, I'm going to...
Madam President, just wanted to mention, I saw some pictures from the testing site in Horace Park at Word of Deliverance. It looked close to maybe 800 cars out there. So we knew that those pop-up sites would be used, but they are really coming in and the police department out there is helping out. And of course, Greg has sent traffic control groups out there to help. So they are really coming through getting tested. So I just wanted to report that.
Great. Yeah, I got tested yesterday on Horace Park. It took two hours. I mean, there were thousands of people out there and they had to cut them off because they go from one to seven. But, you know, I, I don't, by the way, have the results yet, so I'll let everybody know. But, yeah, it was crowded. It was great. It was great. People really want to get tested. And so to look for the testing sites, you can go to the county's website because they're traveling around in that zip code to make them as accessible as possible on foot. Greg was very intentional about that, to his credit. So look for those sites on the county website. But yeah, I'm, I'm glad to hear it was crowded once again. And then next week, we've got, there's one in Delhi, and I'm trying to remember. It's, it's all the hotspots in the county. And then the county's testing will fold in nicely once the pop-ups kind of conclude. The county's partnership with the provider will expand testing again with the 19 million that the three of us allocated for that purpose. And so we will continue to have extended testing capacity and hopefully tamp down the spike that's going on in Hamilton County. And everybody should be wearing, by the way, mask up. Mask up, everybody. I know my chalkboard says mask up. Okay. Thank you for that, Commissioner. All right. I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, the sale of property at competitive bidding, or the sale or other disposition of unneeded obsolete or unfit for use property.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Semardumis?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes. I, I will give the example of within my family, my, my brothers and sisters are the first ones in my family to even go to college. So that's...